I'm going to call to order the June 19th meeting of the Fairview City Council. The Kirk, please call the roll.
Counselor Prom.
Here.
Counselor Kreenmeyer.
Here.
Counselor Barton Mullins.
Here.
Counselor Quimby.
Here.
Counselor Arnold.
Here.
Mayor Wetherby.
Here, and Counselor Owen is excused. Would you all rise, I'll lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everyone. The first item we have is citizens wishing to speak on non-agenda item, and we have three people, so I will call the names. If you would come up and please leave, give your name and address, I would appreciate it. And the first is Jeffrey Arnold.
Jeffrey Arnold, 892 Northeast Clear Creek Way, Fairview, 97024. Just wanted to reintroduce myself to you before you make an appointment tonight to the PRAC Committee. I've been recorded secretary for the Live Work HOA in the past. I'm currently on the board of the Winstrom HOA. I'm also serving a one-year term on the Arts and Community Events Advisory Committee as vice chair. I am eager to learn about the parks and recreation master plan, and would like to move forward using the funding that is allowed, allocated to improve these areas of our city. I think that I would bring a new set of bias to this committee. I believe that we can expand the recreational component of this. Something that's unique about me is that my association with the ACEAC. I think there's got to be some crossover between these two committees in bringing recreational opportunities to Fairview here. One of the things that brought my family to Fairview was the park system and for our young children. I think they're a wonderful resource, and I'd love the opportunity to serve on the PRAC. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Renee.
Hello, everybody. Renee Delano, 2128 Northeast 203rd Avenue, Fairview, Oregon 97024. Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman. I have prepared and given you a copy of a proposed ordinance for limiting the number of chickens that are in the Fairview city limits. In regards to backyard chicken keeping, the city of Fairview, it follows its laws set by Multnomah County and regulated by vector control. Recently, the city has passed an ordinance 6.05.040 under the FMC nuisance ordinance banning roosters from the city of Fairview. This follows closely in the footsteps of surrounding areas of Portland, Gresham, and Wood Village. The growth of Fairview over the past 20 years has taken the city from a rural farmland into a growing suburbia of residential and commercial properties. Proponents of suburban urban livestock say that these animals have many benefits, which I agree with some, namely the provision of chemical-free pest control. Since chickens eat many bugs that are common to the area, they provide free fertilizer for home gardening, egg production for home consumption, and sometimes fund for a family pet. It is also said that chickens are not as loud as disruptive dogs. Odor is easily controlled with proper cleaning and poses no more concern than odor of traditional pets. Every family that gets their eggs from backyard hens is likely reducing or eliminating their purchase of eggs laid by hens who suffer otherwise on factory farms. But relative comparison between factory-raised and backyard chickens shouldn't be obscured by the rarely acknowledged welfare problems that can plague backyard chicken arrangements. Large concerning factors are noise, odors, diseases, sanitation problems stemming from improper care and maintenance, free-roaming chickens, and the increase of natural predators in otherwise residential neighborhoods. Backyard chickens and their eggs frequently fall to prey from dogs, mice, rat, hawks, owls, skunks, coyotes, opossums, and raccoons. Rodent infestation most likely becomes a problem because chicken feed is easy to get at. Finally, there is also a biological factor that for most breeds, egg production begins to decline after about a year to two years, but a chicken can live up to 10 years. What does one do with a hen who has outlived its productive output? They can be killed for chicken soup, or they almost can be given to sanctuaries. However, the unlimited amount of fowl that can be now kept by any person in the city of Fairview sanctuaries are finding themselves just bursting at the seams, similar and not unlike dog shelters. Keeping it as a companion, this option is hardly sustainable, especially if the purpose was to have eggs in the first place. It is a risky endeavor to keep a companion anyhow, because chickens are not bred as normal companion animals, and the chances of them are very high to dying of violent death due to a predator, something no one truly wants or wishes to experience with a non-human animal. I have given you a copy of a proposed ordinance for the city of Fairview that would limit the number of backyard chickens to three. It is following in the guidance of the surrounding communities and their ordinances. It is a fair ordinance that would still allow the keeping of backyard chickens for egg consumption, but keeping the number low enough that it reduces the negative impact on the residential area. I'm asking that the city council take a very close look at this proposal and bring the city into a coordinated effort with the surrounding areas to keep residents satisfied, that they can still continue with healthier food options, but living in harmony with their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Always well put. Very thoughtful piece. And next is Brenda Ziegler. Welcome, Brenda. You get to come here all the time and speak.
I was here when you were gone, about a month ago.
Okay. Sorry.
My name's Brenda Ziegler. Sorry, I don't use these microphones very often. My address is 1490 Northeast Village Street, Fairview, Oregon 97024. That's my business address. I actually reside in Gresham. I'm here today to just talk a little bit more on the sidewalk and tree issues for Village Street. I want you guys to keep in mind that both sides of the street, both homeowners associations, are working very closely on this, and we really appreciate it that the city has made a committee to look at this closer and work on it. We would appreciate being kept informed as other things come up, too. I don't know, I don't know all the city policies and procedures, so I don't know how that's really done, if it's posted, or if I have to come to all these meetings, or what. So if anybody can prep me on that, that would be great. Like I said, we're thankful the city is in discussions over this. However, we want to stress the urgency in making the situation right. And the reason for stressing the urgency is that there was a person injured about a year and a half ago, and it did result in, you know, lawsuit, which it wasn't a huge one, but you never know when a huge one's going to happen, and we don't really want one to happen. The reasons we feel the city should prioritize and pay for the repairs on Village Street are, it was through a fault in the design that this problem even came to fruition, and we property owners there had nothing to do with this, even though we are adversely affected by it now. We realized that most of the city people didn't have anything to do with it either, however, it was the city that approved that. And we also wanted to point out that Village Street is a completely different situation than the rest of the village. Village Street had a different compaction rate. We don't have, the sidewalks aren't the same, we don't have the grass there, and one path of sidewalk, we're all sidewalk with a very narrow area for the trees to be planted in, and they didn't do the barriers that are now something that most cities do, is my understanding in my further education of this. And the other thing that came up just a couple weeks ago is some press again about this. And when I first moved into the city with my business, which was 2003, about a year later, we had a lot of very bad press going on, and it became basically a negative circus for Fairview, and hopefully we can avoid that this time. None of us contacted the outlook to write the article, but I'm pretty sure everybody read it, and it wasn't, it wasn't a pro-move-your-business, move-your-family to Fairview. So basically, to sum it up, we would like the current issues and problems made right, and we would appreciate this being done before additional amenities are put into place, too. We understand that the city is limited on budget and time and manpower, so if we could prioritize that, and if for the sidewalks and trees, if we could also prioritize Village Street for the first round of improvements. My understanding is there's going to be more and more rounds of improvements, because there are issues all over the city. I see I've gone over my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we did receive a report from the committee, and we can have that perhaps available tomorrow to go to the, because it'll be coming to the council. And Counselor Prom.
Brenda, I just wanted to let you know that the sidewalk subcommittee has met individually, and we've met with city staff. We have some proposals. We're moving forward on these in a rapid pace, and we'll give you the highlights later this evening. Stay tuned.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and just, we have, those who are new don't notice it, but we have new television cameras. We are now in high-definition. So, other than a makeup artist, I guess we're ready to go. Okay, the next thing we have is a presentation, Greater Portland, Inc., and welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Derek Olson, and I'm with Greater Portland, Inc., and I'm going to give a short presentation about our organization and our partnership with the city of Fairview, and happy to answer any questions. So, we are an organization that is a nonprofit economic development organization representing the greater Portland area. The way we define the greater Portland area is the same way that the federal government does. It's the metropolitan statistical area, which is five counties in Oregon and two in southwest Washington. So it really is the metro area writ large, not just the counties that some people think of when they discuss the metro area. And our goal is economic development for this region, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about how we do that and who we partner with. We, again, are a nonprofit that came about two years ago through the merger of a public organization and a private organization, and we get about half our funds from cities like Fairview, and about half our funds from private organizations, companies like The Standard, who's our board chair. And together with those funds and some grant dollars, we pursue business development opportunities on behalf of the region. The, just to give you the context that we operate in, is that we are representing the region, competing against other regions, not only in the United States, but worldwide, where most of the job growth and opportunities for business often are outside the United States, and there's a real focus on traded sector jobs, which, what we mean by that are when goods and services are sold outside our region, so they can bring dollars back to help support the service industries in our region, and all the, you know, the revenue that helps provide to make a good city. But fundamentally, that the more, since we have a relatively limited market here, the more we sell outside our area, the more dollars we can bring back in to invest in our area. Many of the metros that we compete with in the U.S. have been doing this for 20 years or so, and like I said, we're two years old as an organization, so we're, we think we're on the right track, but we're new and we're still learning things. We break up our work into three key areas: business development, marketing and branding, and regional strategy and coordination. I'm the vice president of regional strategy and coordination, and I work very closely with cities and counties, and I'll talk about what my colleagues do on these other areas. So business development really is the heart of what we do, and essentially, we are looking to recruit businesses to come to the area and help businesses that are already here to stay and expand. So our marketing and business development work hand-in-hand. We market the area, but not in the same way, say, that a tourist organization would, but really for businesses looking to do business here. We're not trying to get businesses really to relocate, that doesn't actually happen that much, but we are looking for businesses who are looking to expand and put up west coast operations or northwest operations. And so, this is just an example of how our marketing and business development work together to make contacts in either companies, or site selectors, or other consultants that work with companies, and to turn them in from possibilities to active projects where they're really looking to site a facility here in the greater Portland area. We focus on the four key industries identified for the region by the economic development community, but we are not exclusive to that, as you'll see from some of the examples I'm going to mention. And these are pretty broad categories. Advanced manufacturing includes anything from transportation equipment to food processing. It's more about the way that manufacturing is done than the actual product. This gives you a breakdown of the type of leads in our pipeline now. So these are potential expansions that are considering, you know, that could be considering the Portland area. It's, many of these are, you know, in the early stages, but you can see they break down by what our key industries are: athletic and outdoor, advanced manufacturing, clean tech, and software. And by software, that includes high-tech as well, computer and electronics. And then there's a little interesting bit of bioscience, which sometimes, depending on how you define it, can show up in the high-tech or advanced manufacturing, but we've seen some interesting possible growth there. So those are the ones we're looking at. Of all the possible deals out there, we've had a couple significant wins where we've been successful working with companies to bring them come here. One is Magnum, which is a subsidiary of a high-tech sports, which is headquartered in the Netherlands, and they moved up a facility, this one actually did relocate. They had some folks down in California that they wanted to consolidate with an existing operation here, so they came up. Whereas Salesforce.com, that was an expansion. So they keep their main headquarters down in the Bay Area, but they were looking for an expansion. We competed against other metro areas in the U.S. Once they selected this area, they chose first and they announced they were coming to the Portland area, and then within that area, they chose the exact site. Our organization is completely neutral. So when we showed the metropolitan statistical area that we represent, we do not care if the job goes one city or the other, or county or other. We are marketing on behalf of the region, because frankly, that's how most of the businesses look at it. They're looking at other regions. Most of them have not heard of, most of the cities outside Portland, they will not know of most of the areas. And it usually is, it's often a secondary decision, the exact real estate, until they've made the decision on location for workforce costs, taxation, et cetera, and then move on to the real estate decision. Another one was Catalyst RX, which is a healthcare benefits firm. They haven't yet selected the site. That's going to be approximately 300 jobs. And these are just some of the examples. We've been involved in some other prominent ones, and this really involves us working with the state, Business Oregon, and then the localities when the company starts looking at a specific site. Again, as I mentioned, the marketing that we do is completely tied into the business development. So we use CEOs or other top C-level officials from companies to tell the story, to talk about why it's a good place to do business, and rather than have us do it. And a specific example, and one of the benefits that cities get by investing in us, is that we do things that it's hard for an individual city to do on its own. So we just launched an app on the iPad, which really tells the story of why this is a great region to do business in. It includes interviews with audio from CEOs in the area, and has all the statistics you normally find, you know, in a multi-page handbook that we used to have, was handing out a book. Now it's all in an app. It includes, you know, like shots of the area from the Oregonians, like if you tilt your iPad on the side, you get all that. It's very neat. I encourage you to check it out. It's free. It's on the, you know, it's on the Apple iTunes store, and we're hoping to branch out and get pending funding for Droid and other platforms. But it's a really neat way so that if, for instance, one of you is off at a conference for a business and wherever, and someone says, "Oh, really? What's it like to live in the Portland area? What's it like to do business there?" Boom, you have at your hands essentially a strong PowerPoint-type of presentation, but it's much more interactive, much more dynamic than what I'm giving you here, because you can go in and out and really hear from people. So it's, we're very excited about it. It's kind of a cutting-edge thing. Very few economic development organizations have done this, and it's kind of the approach that we were able to do as a nonprofit, where we don't have to, some of the strictures that other organizations or public jurisdictions might have, we have a little more flexibility with that. And so this is really done on behalf of the region. And then just let me wrap up real quickly, some of the work that I do. I work with all the cities and counties here where on a, every few years, we work together on something called the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Your mayor sits on the board, which is an affiliated group of this organization that plans the strategy, which allows the region to qualify for federal economic development funds, or, and also places us well as a region to apply for competitive grants. And so, your city's already well represented through that. And then we are involved in a new initiative called the Greater Portland Export Initiative, which is, we are one of four cities selected by the Brookings Institution, DC Think Tank, to look at a strategy in how you would double exports in the metro area. This is responding to a national goal, with the idea being that if we're now exporting about 21 billion from the region, if we could double that, which is clearly a big goal, you would create a tremendous amount of jobs. Economic models show that about 5,400 jobs are created for every new billion dollars in exports. If you were to double exports, you would add about 100,000 jobs. Again, clearly a very big goal, but there's some real concrete work that we're doing on this, and if you were to try to recruit new businesses to expand here, it would take you a long time to get that many jobs. So we see this as a key strategy as part of the business retention and expansion, because it's fundamentally about helping businesses in the area here. And we have four overarching strategies that help us to connect with small, medium-sized businesses, better market the area, help connect businesses with the services that they need, whether it's market research, or counseling, or the others, and how do we connect our businesses, for instance, to the dominant exporter we have here in computer and electronics? How do we get some of our smaller companies in that supply chain? So there's a whole host of details, and I encourage you, if you're interested more of that on our website, we have a 30-page business plan that goes into what we're doing. But this is just the high level to give you an idea. This is the type of work we do, and we really, we, just to sum it up, we see ourselves as acting on behalf of not only you, but many other cities in the area. Fairview is now a part of something called the Small City Consortium, where we have a tiered membership plan, so that we can make it affordable for cities of different sizes to be represented. You have a seat on the board through Twal Mayor Lou Ogden, who is elected by the small cities to represent them. So he sits on the board next to the mayors of larger cities, as well as, you know, CEOs or other top officials. It's really a high-level opportunity to discuss economic development in the area. So we're excited about this partnership with your city, and working with Samantha, and Alan, and Erica on the city staff, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Would you talk a little bit more, my memory is from that small city group that you were explaining something about how cities can put up some information and pictures?
Right. Yes, Mr. Mayor, on our website, which is linked to all the cities in the region, and so we're just adding the link with Fairview and some of the other cities that are just coming on board, like Troutdale and others. We have something called a Features Property Site, which rotates commercial properties available in the area. It's one of the more heavily trafficked sites on the web, and it's a really good way for cities working with their brokers to highlight commercial properties that might be of interest to companies looking to site. So as part of the process, we'll be working with your economic development staff to make sure that you can avail yourself of that opportunity.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Well, I guess you did a good job, Derek. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for your partnership. We're excited to work with you.
Counselor Arnold, sorry.
Derek, just a quick question for you. So you said that there are different things that different companies look for in cities. Do you have, or have you put together any sort of shopping guide, per se, for fees and population on each of the cities, so that you can kind of give to potential prospective employers?
That's a good question, Counselor Arnold. We do that for the region. So if you look at the app, or you look at our website right now, it compares our region against others, but we do not compare cities within the region, because our goal is job growth for the region. And so what we've found historically, and why there's organizations like ours, is that when you have one city and another competing against each other strongly on issues like that within a region, it can be detrimental to trying to recruit a company to the region. And so, we've found that by focusing on the region and comparing ourselves against other metro regions, be that Austin, or Seattle, or whatever the case may be, that that's usually where they're looking, that when they're initially making the decision, they're not usually looking at the micro level, they're more looking at the macro, because they're going to draw workforce from across the region, they're going to be using the transportation across the region, and so they, so they have larger goals. So, in a word, no, we don't do city-by-city.
Good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Counselor Kreenmeyer.
What would you say are the top three things that businesses or companies are looking for when they're looking to, you know, relocate or expand their businesses? I mean, is it things like, you know, education, transportation, you know, educated workforce? What would you say are the top three priorities or things that they look for?
Sure, Counselor. Well, I'll defer to my colleagues who are more expert on this, but in general, first of all, it varies very much from case to case. But in general, issues like workforce, infrastructure, cost of doing business, and that's really the total cost, and so I wouldn't focus on something just like taxation, because you have to factor in utilities, water, you know, is your water supply reliable? And so, for instance, even though the greater Portland area is not as low-cost a area as some other areas of the country do business, the total cost of business can be very competitive for companies, and so that's why you have still a very high level of manufacturing done in this area, even though we are not, you know, compared to some areas of the country, a low-cost area. So it really is a complete package, and that's why I think that while issues like incentives or real estate costs can become important, they're often not the first thing. Once they've narrowed down the decision, then that can be a factor in deciding. I think I'll stop there, because like I said, I'm not expert in it, but from working with colleagues over the years, that's usually the areas that both we focus on and also Business Oregon, the state, when it does recruitment work.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Derek. Great job.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thanks again for your partnership.
Thank you. Okay, next is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent.
Second.
Who's in second? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is passed. Okay, next is the director's report, and city administrator.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just have a few brief items. I do wanted to report on the cleanup program that the city had. We had 96 people, or at least 96 coupons submitted to 12 Mile as part of that program, so we're, you know, happy to see that benefited some of our citizens. I did want to remind everyone that the council, at least out there in our general public, that city council next meeting is going to be mid-July due to the Fourth of July holiday, so it'll be July 17th when we meet next. The other item I wanted to make sure everyone is aware of, it's the summer season, and we are, everyone's calendars are getting very, very booked, but there are some really exciting events happening in Fairview in August, and so I encourage everyone to go to the events page on the city website, and mark the dates for the National Night Out, the East County Bite, and the Chili on the Green, and mark your calendars so you can make sure you're here, and the times. So if you have any, we'll be putting additional information on the website as we receive it from those organizations, with additional details and links to their events pages and those kind of items as well. So please feel free to contact staff with any questions. And that's all I have for you this evening, but directors do have reports.
Yes, Counselor Quimby.
Couple things.
Absolutely.
I have a bad memory. I didn't keep track of this. I'm wondering if you know off the top of your head your anniversary date for being city administrator?
I was appointed interim in, it was the first of June, was the end of May, first of June, and permanent appointment was September 9th, I think. September 9th would be the year.
Thanks. And the second one is, I did not get a chance to sit down and answer the email that you sent to me this afternoon. You had asked about the Red Flex initial traffic. traffic study that was done, and one of the intersections that they claimed there was, I don't remember if it was per hour, per day, or what their parameters were on the study period, but they claimed that there was, I believe it was seven, was the number of people who had run a traffic light at the top of the westbound exit off of I-84 onto Fairview Parkway, and there is no red light there. That was the intersection that they
Okay.
claimed cars were running a light, and it doesn't exist. That's all I have.
Great.
Anyone else?
Oh, and I just have a, a quick question, and it's more of a, a general question, and maybe someone else might be able to answer this, but is, what is the Council's policy on working together jointly with the Planning Commission to kind of create some joint sessions and kind of set priorities?
Yeah, if, if Council had, would like to do that, we can certainly arrange that. We have occasionally done that in the past, where they've had a joint meeting between Planning Commission and Council. So, certainly, we can facilitate that, if, if that is what Council desires to do.
Okay. And everybody use their notes. Anybody else? Yes, Councilor Quimby?
I would have typed in on that one, and see how the rest of the Council feels. I'm thinking maybe we could just automatically schedule two or three work sessions, maybe four per year with Planning Commission, and just, just
We'd have
Keep this on the same page on a, on an annual basis.
Well, we can have annual meetings. I, if we have more, I think we should have some specific issues.
True.
So, we could do a, and you know, and maybe in the fall. That'd be a good time, right after the summer. September, October, whatever.
Sure.
Good. Excellent. And I'd also like to request that for the fall, that, because I know that Tammy brought some issues up about her committee, is maybe we could start having a yearly, we're supposed to have a year report from the committees. It would be really good, so we touch and connect with them, and we can find out what their issues that are similar to what was reported by Councilor Arnold, or other issues, whatever.
Absolutely.
We could schedule that, maybe.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And then we have Directors Reports. If Alan Berry, Public Works Director?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of Council. Just got a couple of things. The first one is just to let you know, as you know, Lindsay left the city as an employee a couple of weeks, a week ago. We will be interviewing the first round of candidates tomorrow, so we're hoping to fill that position quite soon. And then, of course, just to let everyone know that Erica will be here for one more week before she goes to have her baby, and we will really miss her. But we're working to get the planner who works for Wood Village on a, a three-month contract to help us out if needed, and we'll, we'll be, we'll be looking at that. And then my, my other thing that I'd like to present, as you can see, London Pettis is with me, and she wanted to come and support our playground, and she's got a few things that she wants to say.
I'm here to support the purchase of the play structure equipment at Cleon, Cleon Park. I have pictures of the equipment we would like to, like, that I would like to give you.
Thank you, honey. There we go.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's two, these are several ones, aren't they? Nice. There's two different.
Two views.
Oh, two views. Okay.
Front side and backside.
Oh, okay. I thought it was two different ones.
We want to, this to be a good community project for the summer. The police chief is helping with the project to stop vandalism and that as well. Thank you.
And Councilor Barton Rollins has a question.
I don't have a question, just a comment. Deputy Director London, I think you've done a fabulous job. Thank you for being here and representing this. This is fantastic. I love this. And I'm really proud of your group for picking out a play structure that is ADA-approved, in other words. So, people with special needs, and children with special needs, will be able to play here and get along just fine because of you. You should be very proud of yourself. Thank you.
Okay, is that it, Alan?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think one of the things that I was thinking about is that, oh, and, and then Councilor Prom has something, but one of the things I was thinking about is, oh, and Councilor Kremeyer, too. So, you see, the pop, more will pop up. So, we, Alan, what about for parking? Because this is going to, two things. First of all, this is going to bring in people who don't just live nearby and walk. This is the type of thing that the word's going to get around. We tend not having some real publicity, making sure you're going to have, when it gets done, there's be, completely have a grand opening, right?
Yeah, Ian, the, the short answer is that, you know, as we develop the, the overall plan, parking obviously has to be a component, and we, the Deputy Directors want to be a part of that as well, right?
Okay. What about for handicap designation?
For the parking?
Yes.
Yeah, we, there'd be handicap access for the parking as well.
Good. And that will, you will have something like that when it opens, is completed?
When, when the park, when the, the overall park is, when the, when the play structure is first there, the parking lot will not be constructed at that time, as, as we sit right now.
Hmm. Okay.
But you, you would still have, you know, you, we, we, obviously, we need to make this thing accessible for people to get to straight away, but the, the parking will have to, I mean, that's, that's a significant
Right. I was thinking particularly the ADA, the ADA thing for handicap. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And, and until, you know, we've, we've started putting together the, the estimate of costs, but obviously, we have to, we have to talk to all the people that are interested, and present it, and talk to the Parks Committee, and anyone else that's interested.
Okay. Councilor Prom.
Yes, Deputy Director London, is it? Yes. I want to commend you on good work here. I've questioned, what is the surface underneath the play structure?
They're cedar chips.
Okay, so if it's cedar chips, how does that allow wheelchairs to get up there? According to this picture, I see cedar chips right up to the wheelchair ramp.
Yeah, we'll, this is a, in general, this is obviously not our part, but we'll, we'll, we'll make this accessible.
Okay, thanks. Councilor Kremeyer.
I just had a couple, couple of questions for you. Not, not, I, I love this play structure, by the way. I think, you know, London, you and, you and your cohorts are to be applauded for the great job that you did, working with Alan on that. That, that looks great. I just want to follow up with you, Alan, regarding the, your meeting with, with Leland, and how that went, and what the next step of the process is, and if we're looking at, you know, having them do an economic feasibility study for us, or just exactly what the status of that is at this point in time.
Yeah, I actually talked to Dave Leland again this morning. He didn't, he was going to get back to me by the end of the day, or tomorrow morning, to let me know what he was talking to the, the developers and other folks, and, and he was going to, but I, I didn't hear from him by the end of the day. But I talked to him again this morning.
So, are you going to put, are you in the process of putting together like a scope, a scope of work, so he can give us some kind of an estimate on what it would cost to, to write a study for us?
Ian, you know, it's a, as Izzy would tell you, is, it's a very complicated issue. We've been talking about that again today, where we, we almost need to, one of the things we were, we need to get the concurrence from all the players, that this is the direction they want to go. You know, none of this property is actually city property, so the driving force really needs to be from the, the people that own the property. And how we get there and get their investment in that is, is, it's a matter of making sure that they're all on board with, I mean, do they, do they even want to do it, or is it just, is it one developer that wants to do it? Does two want to do it? Leland's suggesting that we ask Metro, Alnoma County, Port, the Drainage District, talk about infrastructure. It's a huge effort. The Planning Commission, and it's not to get ahead of ourselves, because they've been talking, the Planning Commission, and I, I believe I saw Cherkovman here, but I, yeah, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the Planning Commission's preference was to develop a master plan for the, the riverfront. But again, it's, you know, what is the extent? What does that look like? We were actually counseled, but Mr. Leland suggested that perhaps that's not the direction we need to go initially. We need to make sure that we've got all the players on board first, but I'll know more. So, he's going to, like I say, he's, he was going to call me back and let me know later today, but I'd need to hear from him. And so, he said, I'll later today or tomorrow morning.
All right. So, you kind of partially answered my next question. What is the status of, of the waterfront rezone down there with the Planning Commission?
Basically, it's, it's, it's a matter of, you know, what is it? It's what, what do we want to put there? What do the people that own the property want to put there? You know, what, what do the Planning Commission want to see there? One of the things that Leland has told us is that it's very important, from an investor standpoint, that you don't have to, you can't have a rigorous set of guidelines in there. He said that is, that would tend to set you up for failure. You know, you need to be developing something there that, that someone wants to build. That's, that's where we're at right now. I think it's kind of going on a, to elaborate on Councilor Arnold's request, I think this is, would be a great topic to get the Planning Commission and Council in one room to talk about.
Our priorities. Yes, that would be really helpful.
Yeah. It, it is way more complicated than you can, and it's, and if you, if you want to look at some examples of people that have done it recently, I think Newburgh and Eugene are two. I think Eugene's is quite, and it's, it's, it's rigorous, it's expensive, and it's, it's an effort. I'm going to actually call those people to see how they went about it. If you, if you read theirs, you'll see what I mean. You know, what do you exclude, what do you include? You know, as soon as you put anything into code, to stand, and I mean, I think Heather would be able to explain this. Once you cast something into, say, a comp plan or a zone, it can be quite complicated to take it out. We're actually going through an issue like that with a, a property right now, where we're being challenged.
Okay. Thank you.
But we are working on it.
Okay. Councilor Arnold.
So, this is two parts. So, I'm, I'm going to go back a little bit, and this will involve you, too, because I've got a question. So, with regard to the Planning Commission, sometimes we hear information from different points of view. Alan, sometimes you share with us things that are going on in the Planning Commission. How does that work? Because we were talking today about committees and uniformity and so forth. With regards to the Planning Commission, do we have a liaison? And, because I think it would be helpful to have a regular report as to the goings-on in that committee. Is that something that's legally possible?
You don't have a liaison for legal reasons.
Okay.
Basically, what you want to avoid is having a council member who's sitting, who's attending the Planning Commission meeting, and who's hearing the, basically, it's any sort of application that comes before them, and you're hearing the whole record, and then it gets appealed to the City Council, and the City Council is the final decision-maker. And let's say you, the counselor, heard something during the Planning Commission hearings that maybe wasn't as clear, that, that the City Council hasn't discussed, and you're making your decision based on that. So...
What would prohibit us from sitting at home and watching it on television, and...
What would, what would prohibit you from what?
Having the information. I'm, I'm confused. It doesn't make sense.
Oh, basically, you can only make your decision based on what's on the record, and it has to be the information that's in front of all of the counselors. So, I mean, basically, there's some case law on, you know, wanting to avoid, I mean, you can have a counselor who is a liaison to the Planning Commission, who could serve as your voice here, and they can come back and, with Planning Commission concerns, but you don't want that counselor to regularly be at the Planning Commission meeting, just, just because you could run into that problem. When it, when an application comes before the City Council, you've basically, you know, heard it twice, in effect. So, that's, that's one of the reasons that we, we don't recommend that you have one.
Am I incorrect? Is the Planning Commission not televised on, okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, then my other piece of the question, it would be great to have, it would still be great to have a report from the Commission, whether it be from a counselor, or from the Chair on a regular basis. It would be great to know what's going on. And then, the second piece was in regards to the play structure. It looks great, by the way, but I didn't, I did notice that there aren't any swings. Tell me a little bit about that decision.
There are. They're just now in the picture.
Oh, okay. All right.
There are six of them.
Oh, gotcha. All right. Excellent.
Okay. Question I have is, what is the role of Leland regarding the city? Who pays for him?
Basically, with, with Mr. Leland, I, I called him because he'd worked on the, the Connections Plan. He had a lot of regional expertise. He also presented to, to Council several months ago on that area. And so, basically, that's his expertise. So, I wanted to know, you know, the basis of his information, so that, you know, he could make a good decision. And he's done, he's done a lot of that stuff, I have to say. If we, if we went out, if we, if we were to choose to do that service, or, and it would, it would be an RFP, so it would be a, it would be a solicitation that people would compete for.
I was on that Connections Plan, so I have some up close. I have up close contact, and I think that we should be wary of the use of Mr. Leland. Okay? That's my two cents worth.
Yeah.
Thank you. And thank you. You, I think that, London, great job. Now, is, I, are you guys going to get a desk up here?
Got a desk? She's, she's a little bit nervous tonight.
That's all right. You get used to it, London.
They really are, you know, we can't compliment the Fairview Elementary staff and students enough. They've been fantastic. And, and the kids actually came to the school board last Wednesday and gave a presentation. And if you look at the transcript of that, you'd see that Fairview got a lot of compliments because of these guys.
Wow, nice.
They actually made us look good. I think they should come every week.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
While I'm up here, I would just like to echo the sentiments of Council as far as the joint Planning Commission and Council sessions. We've had several of those in the past, and I think it was really good for everybody, because it gives Council the opportunity to see more of the direction that the Planning Commission is headed. And at the same time, I think everyone that we've ever had, the Planning Commission members, walked away with a better idea of the kind of things that Council had in mind. walked away with a better idea of the kind of things that council had in mind for the city. And I think it really does a great job of helping to get us all on the same page.
That's great to hear. Fantastic.
Would really encourage it.
Excellent.
And we, we meet next week, so we can put that in our agenda to talk about.
Good. I'd say something in the summertime, but it's hard to get people together. Maybe something in early September, you guys work it out. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Deputy Director Folger?
Mayor Weatherby, council, good evening. I would like to announce that for the fifth consecutive year, the city of Fairview has received the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. It is the highest honor that a public institution can receive for their financial reporting. And I would also like to commend staff for their hard work and dedication to receive this award. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, anyone? I wanna thank you. Good job, Lisa, and to the, pass it on to your department, too.
Absolutely.
Great people.
Thank you.
All right, and our final report, Chief Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Early this morning, Fairview Police arrested two juveniles for multiple car prowls in the village. We're estimating approximately forty. What they were doing is they were walking along, pulling every car door until they found unlocked cars. The message that we reiterate on an ongoing basis is please lock your cars. Criminals are, are most often opportunists, they're looking for easy targets, and this is a very common practice for car prowler thieves, to just pull door handles, find unlocked cars, and then ransack the car and steal a bunch of stuff. So to the television audience as well, please lock your cars, no matter where you live, lock your cars, and that in, in a large percentage will avoid being broken into. Secondly, I want to just touch on an issue, and to remind counselor, council, for those of you that were on council back in September, October, I believe it was, I met very briefly with you at a workshop session in my capacity at, at the time as president of the Oregon Association Chiefs of Police, to talk about a potential bill that would be entered into the legislature that would involve photo radar in school zones only. I received at that time unanimous support. That bill ultimately was introduced by Representative Gorsick and became House Bill 3438. House Bill 3438 passed the House, something like forty-four to sixteen, went over to the Senate. The Senate amended the bill after consult, after consulting us, they were gonna kill the bill initially in committee. They finally made a phone call and asked if, if I would personally support an amendment of the bill so that Fairview would be the only city in the state allowed to do a pilot project. My response was twofold, one, I hate to see that happen, but if that was the only way that we could keep the bill alive, I would support it under one condition. The bill had to say may, not shall, because it was not my decision. Ultimately, the Fairview City Council would have to make that decision. That, that amendment passed. I asked them why in the world Fairview was the only city in the state selected. They said at that time it was in recognition as my position as the president of OACP. That was kicked back to the House per the House, per the, the legislature rules. The House did not agree with the Senate amendment, and it has now been placed in conference committee. I wanted to emphasize, I think, one, I, I, I support expanding the bill. I don't think Fairview should be the only city in a pilot project if it passes, even though I think it's great recognition for the city that they trust us enough to operate a pilot project. That's not enough information, it's only a nine-month project because of summer vacation. So I hope that they expand it if it passes. Number two, there's two very important provisions in the bill that I wanna talk about that really reinforce why we believe it's in the, it's all about the safety of our schoolchildren. The bill will require that there be flashing yellow lights at any school zone that would operate this program. Number two, it would have to have the display that says your speed is, the digital display, so that not only are you seeing the flashing yellow lights warning you that it's twenty, you would also see your speed displayed before you would enter into the area where the photo radar would be operating. So it really is about kids' safety, slowing cars down, and a zero tolerance for people speeding in school zones. Again, it's in conference committee, have no idea what the final results are going to be. And as of just a few minutes ago, it had not moved out of conference committee, and the session's down to, I think, two weeks left. But I'll be, and I wanted to update you because that was a council discussion back at workshop. Other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Arnold.
Chief, how big of a problem is this? Do you have any details for us?
The car prowling?
No, how big of a, how big of an issue is driving too fast in speed zones? Is it a big issue?
Yes. I'm not, I'm not sure.
So I'm assuming that you guys have, um, cops staked out at schools, and like, what percentage of the time are you finding people speeding through school zones?
We don't, because we don't have the resources. There are five schools in our city, we have one to two police officers on duty, we can't work our school zones effectively.
Are you getting complaints from the schools with this concern?
Well, no, from parents, from the school, from parents, from the officers. My observation, we work the school zones when we can, but we're having a lot, a lot of problems. Halsey particularly, the mayor and I have, we've talked to the county about obtaining the flashing yellow lights, they won't do it due to the cost. It was even a bigger problem before there were sidewalks. You remember, up until recently, there were not any sidewalks on one of the sides on Halsey. So the kids were walking to school in the school zone area, and there weren't any sidewalks for them. So it's a big deal, we've got it, we have to slow the cars down. We've been fortunate in Fairview not to have any serious injury accidents due to kids being hit. I think we need to be proactive and not wait for that to happen.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, it's good, keep our fingers crossed.
And that's it for us.
Okay, and council reports, and let's start with Counselor Prom.
Okay, great. Okay, so the Fairview City Sidewalk Subcommittee consisting of Counselor Quimby, Counselor Kremier, and myself, met Tuesday to discuss the sidewalk repair and safety issues within the city of Fairview. We started the process with looking at seven basic questions. I'm just gonna give you the highlights of this. We had very good consensus on this, and we're going to be working with staff to put some potential ordinance changes into effect for reading at the next council meeting and voting on the second reading. First of all, we want to encourage street trees. We want to encourage street trees in the city of Fairview, but not to mandate them. That would be a big change. If street trees are put in in the future, we're also going to require certain specifications, such as tree wells, so they do not continue to pose a sidewalk lifting problem. The city's also, is gonna be publishing a list of appropriate street trees going forward. Also, another thing we would like to do is allow some code changes to, allow for the alteration of current sidewalk areas, to remove sections of concrete, to expand planting strips, to allow for tree growth. We want to propose a cost-sharing program. This would have where the city, the homeowner or the property owner would initiate a, a bid for sidewalk repair, and the city would do like a fifty-fifty cost-sharing with a cap on the city's part. This would not be for tree replacement, this would be for sidewalk repair. Another, one of the questions was, is should the sidewalk repair program continue to be complaint-driven or proactive? And we believe that a proactive program is in the best interest of the city, and we're hoping to hire or get an intern or some other person to do a detailed inventory of all the sidewalks, and start sending out requests for repair letters. The, as far as specifically for Village Street, the, all the rules that we're applying would apply equally to every part of the city, including Village Street. So those are the highlights, we're working out the details with staff, and hope to, we wanna move forward quickly on getting some, some of this implemented.
Thank you very much, Counselor Prom, that's excellent report. Thank you, thank you, good committee. Counselor Kremier?
The only thing I have is gonna piggyback off of Counselor Prom. Last Thursday, I went to the EDAC meeting, and they forwarded me a recommendation to bring to the city council and the sidewalk committee. And I'm just gonna read it here really quick, so it can go on record and everybody can, can see what they came up with. "The Economic Development Advisory Committee supports a city budget line item for some unnamed amount of money per year for sidewalk repair and improvement." Number two, the second recommendation is the Economic Development Advisory Committee recommends that the city actively pursue and prioritize a remedy to existing sidewalk and street tree problems on Village Street, and to change the Fairview Municipal Code to include standards which will serve to alleviate problems in the future, i.e. root barriers, required minimum spacing around street trees, and specify, specify the types of trees to be planted, so. And I think a lot of the issues in this recommendation, you know, we, we covered in our meeting this week, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and Counselor Barton Mullins?
Thank you, Mayor. Several meetings in the last week or two. First one is IMAC-TUC, which is East Volnamah County Transportation Committee. Rich Guatinabi from ODOT gave a presentation and talked to us about the closure of I-84. It's going to be closed for several entire weekends coming up, and I apologize, but I left those dates at home. They are also currently putting in an extra lane from Halsey to the 205 exit. So there will be two lanes from Halsey to 205 to exit, which hopefully will break up that bottleneck there every day that a lot of us drive. And they're hoping to get ahead on that project when they close the freeways. They're hoping that they can work on that project and get it done quicker. They're actually gonna be closing I-84 in one complete direction for an entire weekend. And the following weekend, they'll close I-84 in the other direction for the entire weekend. I believe there are three different weekends, all in July. So, one of the things that they said that I found really, really interesting, I guess this is new technology, and it's something that if our red light cameras ever go away, that we might consider. They have new lights that, if it's like a four-way stop, if someone runs a red light or starts to run, you know, a, a very yellow to red light, the lights going the opposite way will not turn green until that car has gone completely through. It's fantastic new technology, I don't know if it's prohibitive in cost yet, but it's certainly something to think about for the future. J-PAC, Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, basically was just informational, nothing really to report on that, that you would be overly interested in. They did give us an update on the climate smart community scenario. And just one of the things I took away from it is if we don't have a plan that's put together and we meet the goals, we don't meet the goals that they, the state has set, we will be losing our transportation funds. So, that was that meeting. I went to East Metro Economic Alliance Committee. They are currently looking for a business member from Fairview. It's not something that the council would appoint or anything, it would be just an individual business person here in Fairview that would join the, the committee. And they are proposing a new subcommittee called Local Issues Subcommittee. This is being sponsored by Matt Wond. He wants to put together a subcommittee of people that would advise cities if they, if they're having a problem, if they want a third opinion on something, that group, the subcommittee, could come into the city and, and help out. There was some opposition to that, mainly me, and they're going back and, and working on the wording of that. And once I actually see the wording, there wasn't any wording yet or anything put down on paper, so once I see that, I am gonna bring it back to the mayor and probably to the council for your opinion on, on how we should go ahead with that particular committee. Then I went to another committee called Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization. Very interesting committee with lots and lots of really important people around the table. But they only meet twice a year. They met last fall, and then we met again last week for two hours, and we won't meet again for six months for two hours. So I'm not really sure how much they plan on, on getting accomplished, only meeting twice every, two hours twice a year. So I will keep you appraised of what the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization comes up with in the future. Those were my meetings.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you. Counselor Quimby?
Just two short meetings that have already been talked about. The Sidewalk and Tree Safety Committee met as a committee, and then met with staff today. And it's already been covered, what we discussed. So, it's in the works, then, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Arnold.
No, no new information, but just an informational piece for the general public. We do have positions open on the Arts and Community Events Advisory Committee, and would very much, if you are interested in your city and figuring out ways that you could be active, coming up with new activities and events and arts that you think our city would benefit from, we would love to hear your opinions, even if you'd just like to come and sit at a meeting and get information and see how the committee works, we'd love to have you attend our meetings. So please see Samantha or many of our city staff, and they can give you more information, or you can check out our website. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, hey, one item, I called a meeting of the regional mayors to meet with Shirdi Kratic to discuss the clean air issue. Metro seems to have, although they talk about not a one-size-fits-all, but a, a group of tools that cities can use. It seems to be the base, it seems to be one which is, some governments tend to fall into, that is, you don't like something, you wanna change a piece of behavior that people exhibit, then you charge them money, you fine them, you fee them, you tax them. The other thing is, is that in meeting with different groups, like for instance, the mayor's group, the west side seems to predominate. They have the number, they have the organization, whatever. The problem with the clean air issue is something that we have out here that's different than the west side, is that we are a suburban city that people do not live and work and buy their groceries in the same city they live in. They may, for instance, live in Fairview and go shop at Safeway or Fred Meyer's here, but you probably don't work out here in East County, not the majority of people. So therefore, their idea of charging people, and they wanna charge people based on the number of miles that they travel, because they feel that everyone should be able to walk and work and shop within walking or biking distance. So I think that we need to have a message that goes back to Metro. And so, we do not have Metro just giving us messages, which they tend to do because you'll see... you'll see that they always bring up a litany of, and a slideshow, dog and pony show, that says, here's what we want to do. But we want to send a message back to Metro. So I'm sure that Sherdy Kratic is the person to do it, fine representative, and the mayor Bemis is not, does not choose to be involved, but the mayors of the smaller cities will be there. This will be this coming week. So that is all I have to say. Okay, next is council business, and it is the appointment of the resolution for the advisory committee. And Alan, you want to present that? I'd like to see, when we do have a vote, that we, we have, what, three people?
Yeah, just to give you the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee has a vacancy due to the resignation of Brad Fudge. The applicants for the vacancy are former PrAC chairman Steve Kaufman, former council rep Barbara Jones, and Jeffrey Arnold.
What I'd like to see, instead of having nominations, if people, since we just have three, there are three set candidates and not a dozen or so, if we could just vote on them, if we're ready. Clerk would like to call the roll.
Do you have a nomination?
Do we need a nomination, or can't we just vote on all three?
You can have a roll call vote, and then you can see if there's one person that has a majority vote after the roll call.
I apologize. So I'm going to do a roll call for each council, and they're going to identify who they're voting for.
Each council, yeah.
Mm-hmm. We want to do that anyway publicly.
Okay. Counselor Prom?
Jeffrey Arnold.
Counselor Kremier?
Jeffrey Arnold.
Counselor Barton Mullins?
Steve Kaufman.
Counselor Quimby?
Jeffrey Arnold.
Counselor Arnold?
I'm going to recuse myself from the vote.
And that's because of your...
Because I'd like to vote for my husband, but I don't think it's appropriate to vote for him.
Well put.
Mayor Weatherby?
Steve Kaufman.
So we have three for Jeffrey Arnold and two for Steve Kaufman.
So...
So Jeffrey Arnold is appointed by majority.
Okay. All right. Congratulations, Jeffrey.
Mayor, we still need to pass Resolution 38. We do have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Yes, Counselor Quimby.
I had my light on for another purpose, but I suppose I can introduce a motion. Resolution, you know, I'm not sure how to word this, actually. We have Resolution 38-2013.
You had approved Resolution 38-2013, appointing Jeffrey Arnold to the PrAC committee with a term of December 31, 2014.
I move to hereby appoint Jeffrey Arnold to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, position one, for Resolution 38-2013.
Second. It's moving second. Discussion. How's the favor signify? Oh, Counselor Quimby.
I just have one thing. I wanted to talk to former Chair Kaufman, in that this is a tough decision for me because you have years and years of experience, and I don't like to see that go to waste. We're trying to do some different things with the Parks and Recreation Committee. At this time, we just wanted to put some new blood on, but I don't want to see you go away, especially don't want to see you go away angry. I appreciate your years of service. I still value your history that you bring, and I guess that's all I can say, is I don't want you to not come back, because I'd still like to see you on the committee, if that's possible in the future.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
No.
Pass. It's passed. Okay, the next is Resolution 37-2013, Playground Equipment.
Excuse us, I'm sorry, Counselor, I mean Mayor. So I understand that Counselor Barton Mullins voted no.
And I voted no.
And Counselor Arnold did not vote on the resolution, is that correct?
Obsteained.
Okay.
Okay. Alan.
As you know, we went through quite a process to solicit people's opinions, worked with the local school, came up with a plan. You can see the options that we looked at, and the one that we thought gave the best value for money in terms of size, capacity, and ADA was the one that's shown as your preferred alternative for a cost of $65,000.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 37-2013.
Second.
Okay, I heard Dan, Counselor Kremier, is the second. Okay, discussion. I'll just say one thing. I have heard questions already from the people living down there about the parking, but I won't worry about that because that hasn't happened. And I know that you guys will plan it well. The other thing I would strongly recommend is that if we get even a temporary place for handicap parking, at least one, that would really make, it would add a really welcome sign to those handicaps who do come down. We're talking about once the playground equipment is operating. Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? It is passed unanimously. Okay, public hearing. This is the signed amendment ordinance, and it... Alan, you're on.
Erica.
Erica?
Erica.
Erica.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I gave a brief report on this at the last council meeting. So the changes brought for you tonight are to fix some content-based code language in the city's sign code. We did a process to revise the sign code back in 2010, and since then, we've done some minor amendments to the sign code, and through that process, some additional content-based language was discovered in the code. So this process is to fix that code language, and a change was made based on recommendations from the city council. From the last, the last city council meeting, changing the process to allow for businesses or residents to apply for a variance for hardship in the case of a street closure. And it was changed from requiring the applicant from going, having to go to planning commission and being able to do it as a type-one process through staff. So that change from city council was made to the ordinance, as well as amending some minor grammatical errors in the ordinance as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any tonight.
Okay, I don't see any.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments from staff, or any other comments, or any questions from, comments from council? I get that out, right? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing section. But all those who are against this ordinance, please come forward, give name and address. Seeing none, all those who favor it, please come forward, give your name and address. Seeing none, anyone who has anything to say, nothing about the weather, but about the ordinance? Okay? None? All right, I'm closing the public hearing. Discussion from council. Any more discussion? So you have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to...
You should have the city recorder read the ordinance for the second time, and then you can vote on it.
An ordinance of the Fairview City Council amending Fairview Municipal Code, Chapter 19.170, sign regulations eliminating content-based code language.
Okay, now a motion.
Now do I make the motion? Okay. You might need to help me here. I move to approve the second reading of Ordinance 2-2013. Is that all I need? Okay.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? It is passed. Okay.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moving to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.